Welcome everyone to the Joint Veteran Endorsement for Veterans in Politics International, Nevada Democratic Veterans and Military Family Caucus, Nevada Veterans Association, and Armed Forces Chamber PAC. We will conduct interviews with Clark County School Board trustee candidates. At this time, I am going to introduce myself and thank our sponsors. My name is Lisa Guzman. I am the current sitting trustee for District A. District A runs from Henderson all the way down to Laughlin. I'm letting you guys know there is Laughlin. And we are, we want to thank our sponsors, Brown Law Office, Stephanie Phillips, U.S. Senate candidate, Ava Bravo, Las Vegas Justice of the Peace Department II candidate, Christian Bishop, Nevada State Senate, District 5 candidate, and Barbie's Goodies Vegas. All interviews start precisely at the time given to the candidates and will be, and were confirmed by them. If you're late, it's an automatic disqualification for endorsement, so there won't be any late people joining us. I'm going to, I'm going to explain the interview process to you. So, the panel members will introduce themselves, right? And they'll give their names, positions, and organizations that they represent. Then each candidate will be given 30 seconds to introduce themselves. Please include why you are running and why you are seeking our endorsement. Then the candidates, you're going to remember that this is an interview and not a debate. So when asked a question from a panel member, you will please direct your answer towards the panel members only. When a panel member asks you a question, you have 45 seconds to answer with 15 seconds left. You will see a yellow card that Jim will show you, and when your time is up, you will get a red card. Jim will also show you that. You get to complete your sentence. So don't look at it as you have to stop in the middle of your sentence, okay? And then at the end, you will each get a closing statement. So we're going to start right now with your opening statement. So we want you to introduce yourself and let us know who you are. And we'll start with you, Mercedes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Lisa. My name is Mercedes McKinley, and I'm a mom and I'm an educator. And I was born in El Salvador. I came here when I was seven years old in 1987. And I grew up in Las Vegas. I've watched the city grow along with its population. And the reason I'm doing this is because I served as a teacher for three years in Title I schools. And as a student and a teacher in the district, I know firsthand a lot of the problems that we need to deal with, and I'd like an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. Happy month of the military child. My name is Carl Catarata. I'm born and raised here in Las Vegas, and I'm a product of CCSD schools. My family, both Democrats and Republicans, educators and public servants, raised me to work hard and to step up to serve. And that's why I'm running today, because I want to make sure that I'm stepping up in service to the Clark County School District Board of Trustees and serving our families and children across District A. I want to thank each and every one of you, panelists, members, and folks tuning in at home, for the opportunity to interview. It's an honor, and I look forward to answering your questions in the best interest of our veterans, service members, and military families that are tuning in.
Excellent. Thank you. And now we're going to have our panel introduce themselves. And, that's right, Jim, you have to wait for me.
Jim Jonas, Director of Veterans in Politics.
Andre Haynes, Armed Forces Chamber PAC.
Patsy Brown, Armed Forces Chamber PAC.
Mikey Kelly, Nevada Democratic Veterans and Military Families Caucus.
Matthew DeFalco, Nevada Democratic Veterans and Military Families Caucus.
Tim Smith, Nevada Veterans Military Family Caucus, also a student UNLV.
Ryan Saunders, panel member for Nevada Democrats, Veterans.
Martin Walker, Veterans in Politics.
Thank you all. We're going to start in the back, if you don't mind, and ask you to ask questions. Now, before you get started, I'm going to remind you all that we'll start with each of you. You will each get the same question. It's not a debate, and just answer the panelist, okay? And Jim will give you your countdown. All right, if we can get started, please.
Thank you for being here today. So CCSD currently has a ranking between 46 and 49 percent in almost every academic achievement category. What are your thoughts or strategies on how we can better our academic achievement? Many people think that too much emphasis is placed on social, social issues and not enough on science, math, reading, those things that will make our children more competitive in the global marketplace. So what are your thoughts there?
Great. Let's start with you, Carl, because we started with Mercedes for opening statement.
Well, thank you so much. And thank you, Martin, for the question. I want to emphasize that my campaign is focused on our three Rs. First is results, making sure that we bring math and reading and literacy to children. Resources for our teachers, making sure that our teachers have, teachers and support professionals have the best resources possible. And career and college readiness, to making sure that our kids are career and college ready when they leave senior year of high school. So to answer your question directly, really having an emphasis on literacy and having an emphasis on math, making sure that kids are reading at a third grade level by third grade is important. Right now, I'm speaking to professors at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, when it comes to the fact that students, some students are unable to, you know, write when it comes to answers on tests. And that is because of the fact that there are times where students are slipping through the cracks, and I think that we need to address that.
Thank you, Carl. Mercedes?
Thank you so much. So I'm not sure what the emphasis on social is regarding in your question, but I can tell you that in the classroom, I taught third and fourth grade, and I did have many kids that were reading at a kindergarten or first grade level. So the first thing that I would like to address, and what my campaign is focused on, is more access to social services as social workers and access to mental health care, because there are so many issues such as poverty and crime that riddle our families, especially in the Title I schools. There's a lot of absent fathers and mothers. I've had kids that were in my classroom that were at child haven. And so we need more support in our classrooms regarding mental health and social services. Academics will never flourish if we cannot tackle those issues head-on at the early level. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yes, thank you. So what are some of your unique qualifications for this office?
Okay. Mercedes?
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned before, I'm a classroom teacher. I didn't go to school for that. I actually got a bachelor's and a master's in geography and environmental resources. And I started teaching at the College of Southern Nevada Henderson Campus. Unfortunately, that didn't pay enough. And so I had to head up another job, even though I had a master's in science. And so I ended up at CCSD as a full-time teacher at the school that I learned to speak English at. And I believe that alone makes me, because I've been in the classroom as a student and as a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
When it comes to unique experiences, I have the opportunity to bring 10 years of board governance to the position. So having the opportunity to work in local, state, and federal level, I think that's going to be very important in the trustee that you are going to endorse in this race. We have seen, and trustee Guzman, feel free to give some eyebrows or not on this, but it can be very difficult when it comes to serving on a governing board, specifically America's fifth-largest school district. Making sure that you have people who are experienced in good governance and knowing how to run an effective board and working with the community is something that you should seek in endorsing a candidate. Not only that, but I've been born and raised here in this state. I bring together nonprofit experience and my experience in government. My mom is a teacher, a special ed teacher. I've been in her classroom, and I'm in multiple classrooms across the Clark County School District. I was in school just last week. And I think that it's important that we're having these regular conversations, these updated conversations, on what is happening in our schools and what needs to be done.
Thanks, Carl. And I am going to stay neutral, okay? So we're not going to call out trustee Guzman. Do we understand each other? All right. Thank you. All right, Tim?
Tim Smith, UNLV student, plus Nevada Democratic Veterans and Military Families. Two questions, Ashley. How could we better secure our schools to include UNLV, where it's an open campus and we have homeless residing there? And the second one was how, and what opinions you would have on breaking up CCSD, where it's the fifth-largest school district in the nation, to allow Boulder City to have a district, Henderson to have a district, and North Las Vegas to have a district?
We're starting with you, Carl.
Two questions, so I'm not sure if that will fit. So number one, in terms of the school district breakup, I think we need school intervention. We need intervention when it comes to looking before we talk about school district breakup. But look, the people of District A have been talking about a school district breakup. I applaud Councilman Dan Stewart when it comes to his efforts at the City of Henderson, when it comes to school district breakup. But what is the plan? We really need to start talking about what the plan is when it comes to that, and we can't sell false hope to voters. That's the first thing. Second thing, and I'm, you can probably tell, and to the folks at home, I'm a very direct person to you, when it comes to securing our schools, I'm actually a candidate who is talking with developers and builders when it comes to how are we going to build our schools to best support school safety? And what is that conversation and what are the results that are actually going to happen? I've already had those conversations with developers and folks in the building industry, and I look forward to making that a possibility in the next capital improvement plan, number six, of the Clark County School District. Thank you.
Great. Mercedes?
Thank you. So I will tackle the breaking up of the district first. I've signed petitions in the past, supporting the breaking up of a district, not just because I know Henderson has an interest in running their own school district, but I know North Las Vegas does as well. And I respect that because it is so big, and it has been hard to manage, let's just be honest. And unfortunately, the current model of having the area superintendents, I think, has not worked. And so I rely more on what's been done in the past. Any of you who are around the 1990s, I'm a big supporter of Brian Cram, Superintendent Brian Cram. He was a superintendent that was groomed up within the district. And so I'm looking backwards to see at what worked when I was a student 30 years ago. And having been a faculty member, I still have people that have been around that long. And so I look to that. Second, as far as school safety and homelessness, you know, I got to draw it back to mental health and social support services, because a lot of the people out here that are homeless are undiagnosed ADHD, autism, alcoholism, drug problems. And it goes back to serving our community with social and mental health care services. I don't believe arming our teachers is an answer, but we need to get to our students and identify the problems early on so that we can help clean up our streets and support the communities that need more housing and basically keep our streets safe. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right, Jim, we're up to you now.
Okay, so I've heard, I've heard this three times now this morning. We need to collaborate better. We need to listen better, and we need to focus on security in our schools. And no one, as of yet, has told me exactly a plan on how to do that. Now, I know I gave you guys a 45-second timeframe, but that is a very long-winded question, and we are actually doing good on time. So I'll start with you, Carl, and then go to the right. Can you explain to me what collaboration means to you? What security in the schools means to you?
I'm the only candidate in this race to have the opportunity and the work to be working with public safety partners. So I am thinking very differently when it comes to how are we reimagining partnerships across the Las Vegas Valley? How are we imagining public-private partnerships with different industries? And I applaud the work of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department when it comes to reimagining what policing looks like in Southern Nevada. I'm grateful to call Sheriff Kevin McMahill, one of my good friends. And the sheriff has done excellent work when it comes to addressing, addressing different aspects of public safety in Las Vegas. So when it comes to what collaboration looks like, I would encourage the folks here to look at candidates who have the conversations, have the difficult and hard conversations that oftentimes we might not imagine. And number two, when it comes to what is the actual plan? I know that on day one already, as a school board trustee, along with the work that I'm going to be engaging SOTs and the different PTAs and also the different HOAs across the City of Henderson, I'm going to be having the opportunity to create task forces. I would like to bring a different diverse group of task force, task forces across the District A to making sure that we are addressing different needs of students. And I'm going to be very staunch in my advocacy for that. And one of those task forces are addressing school safety. As a survivor of gun violence myself, I think that it's important to address what weapons look like in our schools and how we are addressing school safety. So thank you.
Thank you. Mercedes?
Thank you. And can I just double-check what the question is? The question is, what is collaboration, or how do you intend to deal with the violence in our schools?
Well, so here, just overall, so we got, we have securities, concerns in our schools, and everybody says, okay, we need a collaborative effort, we need to start having these conversations, but I've still yet to hear any action plans. So it's fine to have a conversation. Andre and I are good friends. We can talk all day, but if we're not, if we're not creating a solution to the problem, conversations don't matter.
Absolutely. Well, the best way I can answer this question is just through my own personal experience. In the three years that I was a teacher, I have been bitten, punched, kicked, and urinated on by students. So when you want to talk about violence in the schools, it wasn't just getting beat up as a kid, as a student. I have worked with autism, I have worked with regular ed, and I can tell you that we don't have enough training for our teachers, we don't have enough training for our staff. When children act out violently, we don't know what to do. So I can start with you right there. I don't have relationships with law enforcement, I will work on those, but I can tell you, being in the classroom, I felt helpless. And I was actually fired from a school because a student was punching a coworker. And I was told not to call CCSD police because the child was eight years old, and CCSD police will not arrest a child that is under 10. So again, that left me in a situation that I didn't know what to do. Every time my coworker took a step, this child punched him. So I interrupted a meeting that the principal was in because the administrators are the only ones that can take any kind of other action. I was fired two hours after I interrupted my principal because I was disrespectful and rude. The student was then taken into the office, given a computer, and lunch. So I don't have the answer, sir, but I can tell you in the classrooms, we don't have enough training for our teachers and staff, and our students are violent, and we need more training. We need to have just a skill, what do we do? I still don't have an answer as to what should have happened, because I got fired two hours after that incident. Thank you.
There's a, there's a law now so that it's not 10, but, and due to situations like that. So I agree with you, Mercedes. Not that I'm, I, I'm just saying, I agree with that. Okay, Andre?
This question is for both of you. Andre Haynes, Armed Forces Chamber PAC. What is the biggest challenge facing teachers, and how do you plan to address it?
All right. Mercedes, let's start with you.
There are 1,400 current vacancies. The number fluctuates, and I've been watching that number since 2018. Back in 2018, it was about 700 or 800. I'm one of those teachers that left, and I have survivor's guilt for leaving. I can tell you right now that teacher shortage is the first thing that's crushing us, because every time a specialist calls out, so that's your PE, art, anytime one of those teachers is gone, we lose our one hour of prep that we have. So teachers get a lunch, and they get a one hour of prep. The minute one other teacher isn't there, boom, we lose that. Then, let's say another third-grade teacher doesn't come, now I have to take their 25 students, I'll split up between another four teachers. Our teachers are overworked, stressed, and tired to the bone. So not only do they need support and collaboration from outside entities to come in and help our students, we need educated teachers, and I feel that we need more recruitment within our state, because Teach for America and other programs that are bringing young people to be teachers out here, they're not prepared to deal with our population.
All right. Carl?
Thank you, Andre, for the question. You know, the biggest challenge when I'm talking with teachers at their door and talking to folks in the classroom is really morale and making sure that what are we doing when it comes to, you know, recruitment and training and collaboration and communication, great things, absolutely. And we also need to start talking about what needs to trickle down from the school board and also from the superintendent, because at the end of the day, whoever makes it out of this race is offering their vision. They're offering their vision. They are one voice on a board that oversees one person, and that person talks about the plans, talks about the results, talks about, hey, we're going to have pouches in classrooms. And sometimes, the public can be misinformed that this, that the trustees make these choices. No, it's, it's a vision. You know, when you give, when you mentor, I have the opportunity to serve as the chairman of the commission I'm mentoring. We give a vision. We give mentorship to our kids. But you don't tell a kid, this is exactly what you need to do. The board has that opportunity. So I think, to answer the question, morale. Morale when it comes to who is the next superintendent that we are going to be hiring? Are they going to be inspiring to make sure that we are addressing workforce shortages, making sure that we're addressing workforce development, results, resources, career and college readiness, and making sure that we're bringing Clark County schools to a new phase in the next future? And I'm looking forward to working with the next board and the superintendent in getting that done.
Thank you. Patsy?
Patsy Brown, Armed Forces Chamber PAC. My question is for both of you. What's your educational background?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I love this question. You know, I, I identify as 26-years-old, so I'm freshly out of Clark County schools. So I'm eight years, you know, eight years ago, I graduated, I'm a proud graduate of Valley High School. I'm a proud graduate of the International Baccalaureate Program, which is one of the most rigorous, rigorous programs in all of, all of America and all in Clark County schools. It's higher than advanced placement classes. I was proud to attend that school. I moved on to University of Nevada, Las Vegas, for my degree in political science, moving on with my minor slash certificate in leadership and civic engagement. But also, I had the opportunity, most recently, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of weeks, months ago, when it comes to Georgetown, Georgetown University's education finance strategy and leadership. That's, that's an important thing that I had the opportunity to engage with, because I had the opportunity to engage with other educators and other academic professionals and superintendents, CFOs, across the country, on what are they doing? What are they doing to bettering their education system in places like Texas, California, Idaho, Massachusetts, and so on? So that's the education background that I bring, but I look forward to also bringing my street experience. I've been out on the streets, working with folks.
Hey, you went over. Be careful, my friend.
Thank you.
Be careful, my friend. Welcome back to my channel.
Remember, you can finish a sentence, you just can't start a new sentence once you have written one.
Exactly. Thank you, Jim. Thanks for the backup, man. All right, Mercedes, let's do this.
Sure. I graduated from Eldorado High School in 1997 and did not have the opportunity to attend college until I was 29. And so I did my college journey all on my own, and I finished a bachelor's, followed by a master's in 2017 in geography and environmental resources. I also got a certificate in geographic information systems, which is a graduate-level certificate. So I like to combine data and mapping, and I love statistics and numbers and maps. And so I bring a passion for math and science, not just to the students, but particularly girls, I'm a little biased, but everybody else, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mikey, let's do this.
We do.
We do.
Oh, wait, no. I remember this from last time. Never tell Mikey Kelly that he has plenty of time.
You know what? Mikey and I, we have a connection. He tried to find me.
Yes.
And that's all very difficult. So I will give you time, Mikey.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, my question is going to be, it's kind of simple, but it's not. One of the frustrating, one of the things that frustrates residents was the accountability of the superintendent. When we, we expected the governing board of the Clark County School District to hold the superintendent accountable, not the other way around, with the superintendent was running ramshod over them, or attempting to. And my question for both of you is, how are you going to hold, obviously now, we're looking for a new superintendent. What are you going to do to hold the superintendent accountable? Because we expect, we elect you to hold them accountable. We elect you to, we elect you to hire them, we elect you to hold them accountable, and if need be, we elect you to terminate them. What are you going to do so that we have confidence in our Board of Trustees to represent us and to do the job?
Great. Thank you. I'll have a follow-up afterwards. Mercedes, why don't you get started?
Thank you. So yeah, I found that very problematic as well, to be honest with you, almost losing sleep over it, because I was a teacher the first year that man took control. And we thought things were going to get better. So as board, I think the first mistake is, is in the contract that is written and how it's written, because they were bound to that contract and honoring parts of that contract, which is why he's still left with a pretty fat severance package. So I think it starts with that initial contract, honoring that contract, and not letting somebody walk away with a paycheck after they've completely decimated us. Thank you.
All right. Carl?
Contract and standards and goals. I've had the opportunity to meet with many of the school board trustees and also folks at Central Office and teachers across the valley. And when I bring my outside experience to this board, it's important to know that, in respect to your question, Mikey, what are you specifically going to do when it comes to accountability? I might look young, but I have a career and record of keeping people accountable. Let me give you an example. Senate Bill 76 in the last, legislature in 21, Governor Sisalak and the Nevada Department of Education, respectfully, out of all due respect to the governor and to the state legislature and to the Department of Education, wanted to abolish commissions and councils. I found that to be a flawed bill, so I advocated, in my role as chairman of the commission I'm mentoring, to kill the bill. And then I asked the state for dollars. I killed their bill, and then I got money, because I wanted to make sure that mentoring organizations, nonprofit organizations, and mentors and young people are getting the result that they deserve. So when it comes to actually holding someone accountable, I have the opportunity and expertise of holding people accountable, working behind the bureaucracy, and making sure that we do get these things accountable, so that when we're at the dais, we look forward to getting those things done. So thank you.
Thank you. Matt, do you mind if I ask, ask a question? Okay, great. So currently, there is a split board, and District A has always held to, held the, the district accountable and have had to make really hard choices on votes. Sometimes they're part of the, I was part of the split, sometimes I was not. So if you find yourself in a split board, what would you be, what would your priorities be so that those who endorsed you knew that you were keeping to the values that you said you would run on? Does that make sense? All right. We'll start with you, Carl.
Absolutely. I think that making sure that we are reaching out to constituents and to voters is important and imperative. I would urge the board, and I would urge Central Office, to making sure that we're sending out letters and sending out mail to parents and teachers when it comes to decisions of the board, being transparent with the taxpayer and making sure that we are being a careful steward of their tax dollars. That's number one. Number two is making sure that having different roundtables and town halls, like myself, I'm going to be hosting a town hall in the upcoming days ahead, to be reaching out to members of the Nevada community in District A, making sure that you are having community and family input all across the cities of Henderson, Laughlin, Boulder City, and Searchlight. And number three is making sure that not only is there a statement of fact before the board meetings, but you, veterans in politics, can entrust that when you endorse your candidate today, you will have someone who knows how to count votes. You will have someone who knows how to count votes, and that's important when it comes to actually getting something done on a board.
Thank you. Mercedes?
Thank you. I think the best way that I will honor the interest of those who endorse me and vote for me is by keeping their children and our children at the forefront of every decision I make. I have a three-year-old daughter, and part of the reason I decided to do this is because I found out there were members on that board who will not put their own students in CCSD. It means a lot to me to make these schools work for us so that my daughter will be a graduate of CCSD, and everything that I will do will be in her service and for the service of all the other children, not just in District A, but for Clark County as a whole. Forty-nine out of 50 is simply not acceptable. And so that's how I will honor all promises made. It all revolves around the kids' education and getting our kids up to speed so they're college and career ready.
I just want to do a little side note. The 49th out of 50th is for funding, it is not for the academics, but thank you very much. And that is, that is squarely on the state. Matt?
How do you believe technology can be integrated in the classroom to enhance student learning?
All right, Mercedes, we're going to start with you.
Oh, fantastic. Well, technology in the classroom starts to be introduced really in third grade. Well, technology in the classroom starts to be introduced really in third grade. It's a standard that students start learning how to type, and so for me, it's actually really exciting to introduce them to Google Docs and start typing small essays and whatnot. And so that is the beginning. The pandemic really kind of showed our cracks as teachers, where we needed to work and increase. Also, with me being certified in geographic information systems, I can tell you that only one school in this district offers that, and that's the Red Rock School, and so part of my passion is to bring technology to schools like Rancho, Eldorado, our Title I schools, or some of the magnet schools again that are serving different communities, because they are cut off from a lot of the technology that's available, and they're not being served. And so something I'm very passionate about. Thanks.
Thanks. Carl?
James, you talked about results, right? So I'm having, I have the opportunity to have conversations with different partners and different businesses in the Las Vegas Valley when it comes to actually making sure that technology is updated in the school district and making sure that we are getting the best technological access to our students. You know, as technology continues to update, to advance, we need to make sure that our children are protected. The families of Henderson want to make sure that their children are having a bright future with the access to internet and the access to technology, and I want to make sure that I am working intentionally on building different ways at the school district and making sure technology access is safe, affordable, but also making sure that we're updating our systems, right? During the pandemic, I had the opportunity to witness, from my time at the city of Las Vegas, communities and schools and different partners bringing together technology to connect our students, both in the rural part and urban part of the Las Vegas Valley. If, without those partnerships, that would have not happened. So I look forward to being a trustee that brings that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a second to breathe, all right? Because that concludes the interview portion of, of this, and I'm going to thank our partners and then give you one minute to do your closing statement, but just kind of breathe, because I know, I want to thank you for running for my seat. I appreciate the fact that you are running for the seat. In the Clark County School District, we, the trustees, we really, we really look at this as, as a way for us to actually assist our kids, and for me, it was the joy of my life to be a trustee and also the hardest thing I have ever done in my life. So the fact that you stepped up, I just want to thank you personally, because I do appreciate it. And I'm going to thank our sponsors. Brown Law Office, Stephanie Phillips, U.S. Senate candidate, Ava Bravo, Las Vegas Justice of the Peace Department Two candidate, Christian Bishop, Nevada State Senate, District Five candidate, and then I'm going to ask you, Carl, to do your one minute. And one minute is one minute, okay?
Yes, trustee.
Thank you.
Thank you. So friends, the choice is yours. I hope you choose, the choice for your endorsement is in my campaign, as we are focused on bringing results to our students, resources to our teachers, and career and college readiness to our schools. I want to be a trustee that you can trust. I'm going to make sure that there is trust in a trustee and making sure that we work together to improving the lives of families and students all across District A. Thank you so much. Thank you to trustee Guzman for your service. I look forward to making you proud when I'm elected this January, and I look forward to working with all of you, to actually getting results for our children and our families. Thank you.
All right, Mercedes?
Thank you so much. So I appreciate your time. The vote for me is really a vote for our students and our teachers, so the motto in my campaign is very simple, students and staff first. I won't make any promises I can't keep outside of that. My focus is really in the classroom, what our schools need, and how to make our students succeed. So I really appreciate that, and I'm sorry, it's a burning question, trustee Guzman, where do we stand in education if forty-nine out of fifty is on finances?
We are forty-seventh.
Got it.
Okay.
We can change that.
We can.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes our endorsement interview process. I want to thank you both for coming, and we appreciate your time, and just know that the Clark County School District is better because you ran for this office. So thank you very much.